Hi.
How are you?
Okay. Okay. Hi. How are you? Okay. Okay. That works. Okay. Oh, I did see that. Yeah, I did see the DASSA. Yes. You want me to raise my hand? Is that easier if I do want to ask a question? Is that the best way to do it? Or does it not matter? Okay, no, I'll be on mute. Okay. Okay, got you. All right. All right. Thank you. Yeah, that's perfect. Okay, yeah, you don't have to worry about. Yeah, this is perfect. Thank you.
We're good?
Excellent. Thank you.
Welcome everyone to a regular meeting of the Hastings and Hudson Board of Education for June 2nd, 2025. Just make some quick notes. We're a little shorthanded this evening. We have trustee Jody Meyer away. We have trustee Maureen Lennon Santana in San Diego, but here. And Theresa McCaffrey had a family emergency, so she can't attend tonight. But just wanted to note that. We're going to open up tonight with a public hearing on the district-wide safety and emergency management plan. So are we presenting on that at all? Or what's the?
No, it's just a public comment. If there's no, it's a public hearing moment.
Okay, so we're just open for public comment on the district-wide safety plan. Doesn't appear there is anybody. So then, sorry? So the next aspect is a public hearing on the district code of conduct. Again, that's an opportunity for the public to speak. Doesn't seem there's anybody available for that, yeah? No? Okay. So we're going to move on to the opening of the public meeting and the FMS interim principal appointment.
Thank you. So we should have in the public agenda now the recommendation by the superintendent that Mr. Daniel Dan Waldeck be appointed as the interim principal of Farragut Middle School for the '25-'26 school year. The appointment will be effective July 1 of 2025 and run through June 30th, 2026. There should be in the public record now not only, if I may, Dan's cover letter applying for the position, also his resume, and there is a recommending memo associated or atop of that. And I'd urge the board, you've seen this in executive content, and it's now in the public record. As we know, Scott Winn, not more than about two weeks ago, announced he was leaving to go to a district never to be named, actually, I've been told it's Irvington, to be the assistant superintendent for critical instruction. I should say Irvington's been highly appreciative of our patience and flexibility in working through this. One of the things that goes on in these things is you have to follow their lead as to timing. And it was a very appropriately private process up to the very end, but we could do nothing, say nothing, until actually the board in Irvington had voted to appoint Scott. Scott, with great due diligence, let us know right away, but that was at this point no more than two weeks ago. And as everyone who knows schools would know, that's right in the 11th hour, if not almost later. So it was essential to me that this was be an interim appointment. The board agreed to that. And often with an interim appointment, the board says to the superintendent, it is your authority to bring us the best candidate. And, and know you'll be, you'll be held accountable for it, but bring us the best candidate. So we did post. We had some 30 up to 40 applications. We had a couple internal candidates. I spent a lot of time with, with both candidates. I brought forward Dan to the board, given that Dan is in that assistant seat in the middle, in the middle school. He's been here with us eight months, but comes with a 10-year record prior to that in Wagner Middle School in the city, which is regarded as one of the really particularly strong middle schools. He was there as a math teacher, a dean, and assistant principal for a number of years. And it came clear to us after he won a very competitive process in the summer. It was a pool of great talent, and he won that race. That was a full process. But it came clear to us quickly in his eight months that Dan really knows middle schools. He knows that age group. He knows those families. He's deeply committed to the full range of learners. He's deeply committed to students of diversity, particularly coming out of Wagner, and if people know that, 1,600 student middle school in the range it draws from across Manhattan. I think some 25 to 30 different schools send their students to Wagner. Some of the students arrive several grades behind. It is a different environment than Hastings. Might I say it's a more diverse environment. And one of the deep commitments that Dan has is to the full growth of our students intellectually, as I like to say, socially, emotionally. And going forward, he's very concerned that we think much more about restorative processes. How do we help our middle schoolers, who often like to try out all kinds of things, help them learn and grow? Dan is a proven, as I've said, math teacher, so he's going to care very deeply about the instructional growth and progress within the middle school, but also the social, emotional. And despite all the great efforts of Maureen Carvajal and her team, we are currently without a building. We should have a building by the start of the school year. So whomever comes in as the interim, that puts much more of an onus on knowing us, knowing our families, knowing our students, and all of this. So out of a competitive pool with only a tight timeframe, so Hastings should feel complimented that even in a tight timeframe, we had this group, Dan was the top candidate. Part of what I did beyond the paper review was, and I did meet with both internals, part of what I did on the paper review was to talk to fellow superintendents who knew some of the candidates. And particularly when I let them know about our transition in the facility, that gave them pause. They said, if I'm you, Bill, I'm going to try and find someone who's going to really know your school, know your families, especially at this timeframe. Last thing I'll say is Dan believes deeply in process. He knows that this is an interim appointment. He knows that in the late fall of the coming school year, we will start a full-blown process to search for the permanent middle school principal. At this point, Dan has said, if all goes well, he'd love to apply, to apply for that job. He understands what is, what is here. So one thing we will do, if you as a board vote to appoint Dan as the interim principal, we will tomorrow, Wednesday, at the latest, post for an interim assistant principal. And we will go through a process. I'll work closely with Dan on that. We would like to certainly bring as we can in time faculty and other voice into that process. That'll be a little bit different than this. But I actually thank the board for giving me as superintendent the moment of accountability. You're going to hold me accountable, then the flexibility. So I can say to you as a board, say to the Hastings families, before everyone heads home for the summer, you know who your school leader is going to be, and that school leader knows you. And I think that's essentially, that's one of the most essential things I can say tonight on June 2nd, with only about 25 days left before vacation. So that's my introduction, my recommendation. I hope it's helpful. If there are questions, happy to speak to them. And I do appreciate the board's intensive work on this over the last, you know, nine, 10, 12 days.
Thank you, Bill. Very well said. I'm going to open up any questions or comments.
Oh, is this on? Yeah. I have to say, when I learned that Scott was leaving, though I wasn't surprised, because I imagined he'd be in many, many great places, I felt deeply concerned for the middle school because there's been such a lack of consistency in leadership. I have a 10th grader now, and what she says to me is every year, every two years, there's a new leader in the middle school, and actually, she says high school, too. So I'm, I really prize continuity. I was, been truly up at nights, wondering what's going to happen with the middle school plan, which I think is a strong plan, with the eight new hires we have. I've been really concerned what, what is going to look like in terms of consistency of vision, hiring into a vision, training into a vision, creating a strong new faculty, because these are a lot of new hires that need to be developed and supported and helped to grow and find their place in Hastings. So the idea of having consistent leadership with Dan, I think, is to be very hopeful. And in our conversations, his discussions of his vision for the school, his belief in data to track subgroups, to look at achievement, to look at the panorama for social, emotional well-being, these are all key indicators that we need to follow the district, and his understanding of them and ability to discuss them and really want to work with the faculty and the administrators around that, to me, was really hopeful and a way to really add some continuity to our building. So I, I feel grateful that he's interested in this position. And one last thing, also his math. For those of us parents in the community who are listening, we know that math has been a pressing issue in the middle school and in the high school, and the fact that he has such extensive experience and knowledge around math from an instructional leadership perspective, I think, is really integral to the success of our students. So for these reasons, I feel really excited to vote in a positive direction tonight.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to quickly thank Principal Winn for the two years here. There, it was a, I mean, understatement to say it's tumultuous two years, and so much good energy has been put in motion, and we owe you a debt of gratitude for that. And I'm also really looking forward to Dan picking up those threads. One thing that, you know, we spent a lot of time speaking with Dan, one thing that really impressed me, you know, I've referenced it a couple times, but when we, you know, a lifetime ago, I was in the restaurant business, and we had a restaurant in midtown Manhattan, and it was the, like, I always call it like the best business school in the world. It was so in-your-face, and I just felt like so much, when we spoke with Dan, so much of the things that we care about theoretically, he has experienced in reality in his, in his background in Wagner. And I'm so honestly looking forward to unlocking that value that you're going to bring. So it's a very enthusiastic endorsement for me as well. Anyone else? No? Is there a motion to approve Dan Waldeck's appointment as the interim principal at Farragut Middle School?
Still moved.
Sarah's second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So. Is Maureen live?
Yes.
Okay. Now I just want to make sure. I, I forgot the check. Oh, do you want her vote? Maureen, were you able to vote, or?
Yeah, I, I said, yeah. I agree.
Sorry.
Dan, would you? They shut me down. Dan, would you like to say something, or not required?
Welcome.
I'm going to speak later on this evening during the DASSA presentation, but I just want to say, like, I do really appreciate process. The time that I spent with the board, and they all know this, really shows their support of me and the middle school, and I hope to really be a part of the, the change and the improvement moving forward. So I'm happy to accept the position and really move forward in a thoughtful way that matters deeply right now in our school community that's going through a great deal of transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you again. Moving on to the HEP Grant Awards presentation. As almost all of us certainly know, HEP is the Hastings Education Foundation, I guess, founded some 40 years ago at this point, that supports so many of the initiatives that end up differentiating Hastings. If we could look back just recently, I mean, we had the presentation last week, or the last meeting, I should say, the robotics team, that started with a grant from HEP. Some of the things we value most in the school is the Basing History Program, the Project Lead the Way Program. All of these things started with the seed money from grants from HEP, and of course, from the greater community in Hastings that supplies those funds. You know, when we go through budgets, so much of what we have to budget for is just meeting sort of New York State curricular mandates, the things we have to do. And it is really HEP that fills an absolutely critical gap in letting us test drive these ideas in the school that we don't really have a facility to do otherwise. So tonight, they're presenting the grants that are going to be in the schools next year, and we have Mariange Vasallo and Candace Douches. We're going to present that to us. So welcome. We have a presentation on this. Is it live, or? Okay, we saw it, but, yeah. But welcome. Yeah, describe the mic, though. Thank you. Oh, maybe the switch on the side.
Hello.
There we go.
Hi, I'm Candace Douches, and this is Mariange Vasallo. We're co-presidents of the Hastings Education Foundation, commonly known as HEP. We're thrilled to be here today to announce the grants our Board of Directors have approved for next year. First off, we want to take this opportunity to thank, to thank all of you for the hard work you do on behalf of our school and our kids. We know it's been a challenging year, and the work at hand more important than ever. So we're greatly appreciative of all your continued efforts. Back to grants, we're honored to present to you the seven grants we're funding for the next school year. For Hillside, coding in lower elementary grades, this grant submitted by Diana Clark introduces K through second grade students to coding through interactive hands-on learning with Kibo robots. This grant will help students strengthen teamwork, problem-solving, and communication skills as they work in small groups to design, build, and program Kibo robots. By reinforcing math, engineering, and critical thinking, the program exposes students of all abilities to fun and creative learning opportunities. Next, we have the Red Trunk Project. This grant submitted by Phyllis Udis supports third-grade social studies on communities around the world, where students explore global cultures, citizenship, and human rights. In this project, students engage with artifacts, videos, and stories from other countries, and create trunks that celebrate their culture of interest. Designed for long-term sustainability, teachers plan to integrate the project into the curriculum. Hillside Indoor Imagination Playground. This grant submitted by Amy Kayzes is for large blue foam blocks designed to encourage free play and creative construction. Collaborating, problem-solving, and inventing their own activities together, students can take rainy day indoor recess from ordinary to awesome. For FMS Circus Arts, this grant submitted by Matthew Adipietro responds to circus materials damaged in the flood. But Mr. A doesn't only plan to replace the equipment, he also wishes to expand the program with a family circus night. Modeled after Hillside's family dance night, this will allow families a chance to experience their students' skills in action. From juggling and walking on stilts to spinning plates and pedal walkers, all are welcome to participate in the fun.
Yeah, and it sounds like one that you want to attend anyway. So for the high school, we have Level Up Village. This grant was submitted by Stephen Lopez, and it's the modern-day version of Pen Pals. It enables 10 to 12th grade Spanish students to participate in a virtual exchange with peers in Spanish-speaking countries. Like, as you can hear from my accent, I would be on the other end in my former life. Through video exchanges, students will enhance their proficiency, applying in-class learning to real-life conversations. They will also gain a broader understanding of diverse cultures as they step out of their familiar environments. And finally, two district-wide grants. We have Sweethearts Heroes: Brave Leadership. And I think, well, Kai, you're nodding. This is something that has been around the, the school for probably three or four years, maybe even longer. This grant is submitted again by Ms. Julian Snyder, and it builds on the success of this program that we have funded in the past. This time, it will be a three-year mentoring program that will train and connect 30 young mentors from both the FMS and the high school to hillshiders. Brave empowers older students to lead with, lead with and teach empathy, bullying prevention, and other important character skills to their younger peers. Designed to involve 260 students over a three-year period, the program will ultimately promote bystander empowerment through leadership. So it's great that this, this is the gift that keeps on giving with Sweethearts and Heroes. Finally, we have Restorative Justice, which Dan has been a part of this year. It's a continuation of a two-year program submitted by the Restorative Justice Committee in 2023. Over the past two school years, the grant changed teachers and administrators to integrate restorative practices and conflict resolution into everyday student and peer interactions. There was a pause in the program this year, so that money was put on hold halfway through the year. They wanted to search for a new provider that would be a better fit for the schools, and it put about a third of the total grant amount, which was, it's about $20,000 of the total grant, on hold. Those funds will be carried into next school year to continue this work. We do remain at HEP deeply committed to the program and support the school's quest to find a more suitable provider. And anecdotally, I did have a meeting at some point with Dan and said, you know, I'm HEP, and what do you know about HEP? And he talked to me about the restorative practices and the work that the school was doing to look for a new provider. So we were excited to see that this was going to be continued. Our board truly appreciates the creative, inspiring, and inclusive grants that come from our amazing teachers and administrators every year, and the recent work done to strategically link them to the portrait of a Hastings learner, as Bill always says. We're also so grateful and humbled by the generosity of this community every year. From generous senior citizens, legacy families, and young parents who donate to our Fall Grant with HEP Drive, to Spring Gala partygoers, none of whom I see here, too many of, but our partygoers and bidders this year did truly party at HEP Chella. They all helped us keep important mission moving forward with strength year on year. As we near our 30 years, we look forward to continuing, to counting on them and on all of you again, not only next year, but for decades to come. So thank you. Next time, we'll have a presentation, and we'll make it fun, and, you know, we'll do circus arts and all that stuff.
Candace, thank you both so much.
Of course.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, trustees? I'll just say, I remember when I, I had a pen. I'll just say, I remember when I, I had a pen pal in third grade in Sweden, and it was like the most magical thing, like, to get a letter from Sweden, like, that's great. That's great, though. I, I just have to say, you know, there's so many good things that come out of these grants that go forward, but I remember even little things, like, there was an assembly I had in nineteen eighty-nine, I was a senior in high school, and it was about, these two guys came in and they presented on, you know, even back then, climate change was a very top-of-mind issue, and one of the things that I think as a child we always felt was overwhelming was the scale of it. And these two guys came in, they had a presentation about what if everything in the world stopped for two weeks? How different would it be? And I remember even just that one, it was like one afternoon, but it was so inspiring to think, like, this massive thing could actually change, and then when COVID happened, we saw some of that stuff. So even these things that happen just once, it's like, if it's the right thing, it, it just stays with you forever, so, no, feel free. Sure.
So this year, we did a senior video with seniors for the gala. Then we'll, we'll make sure to share it with you if you haven't seen it already, but we did a survey with the seniors where we asked them through the grants that we funded in your years, from kinders through
That's great.
through senior year, which have, you know, risen up to the top, and then based on those, we did the video. And, and some of the kids were talking about how doing some of the Maker Spaces grants that they did when they were at Hillside led them to really create a passion for robotics, and some of those kids were the ones that were, you know, had the initiative to push their teachers to bring the robotics team and then move on to engineering, studying engineering in college. So, so there's, there's, there's an anecdotal through line, right, from
Totally. I will say, my own son took Project Lead the Way Engineering in tenth grade, and now he's studying civil engineering in college, and is currently in a civil engineering internship in Brazil right now, so a hundred percent, it's, it's really wonderful, all the stuff.
We'll make, we'll make sure to share the
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great.
This is also wonderful, and HEF does so many great things. I think about the auditorium in the high schools, it's so tremendous. But I noticed a lot of these grants were from the elementary school, and I wondered if you could tell us a little bit about the process and like how we might be able to get more middle and high school grants in the mix.
I think this year was particularly challenging, I mean, you've been in the Grants Committee before.
I have been in the Grants Committee.
Because we had the flood in FMS, and then the high school had a new principal. So, you know, we, we do have our meetings in October every year to kick off the year and talk about our goals and what are the district goals, and kind of get together with Bill and the leadership team so that we can kind of get this going. And we've planned to have meetups with the different schools and talk, you know, just do more things this year that kind of got circumvented by the flood, but hopefully next year, challenge to, well, to you guys, and to Bill and the team, Melissa and Maureen, to, you know, and, and we are here, we do want to do more to help motivate the teachers. I mean, we, we, as Amy now knows, we make teachers' dreams come true, but if they can't dream, then we can't make it happen, so.
Yeah, that's great, though. Thank you again, thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
I mean, I should speak to that, because that's one of those where, where the answer is us, meaning back here on this side.
I know.
I mean, so I think that the transition in leadership and, and the FMS situation were really quite substantial. I mean, you have the most consistent leadership without a building flood at Hillside, second most consistent leadership but a flood with it at middle school and Brando at the high school, but I'm looking at Tara, who is nothing but energetic and creative, so I'm quite sure there'll be more from the high school next year, because one of the things that HEF values very much, so you know I'm listening, is very much what's coming from the teachers, what's coming from the building level, as opposed to what's coming out of the central office. So I think we're, I was about to offer something in that back row that would run out of the building screaming, which was a meeting before the end of the year, which I'm not going to do, but I think earlier than October, I think we should have a little round table. I'm happy to sit with you all, but the key is, is our building leadership. So I think you could sit very early in the fall, talk, talk about where we are, and I think you've got some magic in that video, so I think that should be shared out, you know, to inspire. Would you all agree? Yes?
We've, we've even been thinking about putting together the results of the survey to share with the schools, because it's, you know, once you start seeing, it, it was only about six or seven quick questions so that we could put together a little script and then go from there, but even when we saw the learning, it was so powerful. Even the Circus Arts, which is an FMS one, was one of the ones that, that rose to the top, but just what the seniors were saying, there's no better evidence than, than that.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I need to take a phone call, actually.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll be right back. Can Sylvia, would you take it over for me just for a moment? I'll let you put the agenda up here. Thank you both so much.
Thank you. We could listen to our student leaders and then go.
Okay, with our president stepping away, I'm going to turn it over to our students so they can regale us with tales of the student report. So you're on, Kai.
We're the filler act.
Absolutely, there you go.
All right, so first off, I just want to say a thank you for our lovely extended Memorial Day break. It was so relaxing and so well-needed for everybody, and I heard many tales of kindergarten exploits over the break. I also want to mention that prom was last Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. It was so, so, so much fun. We started out taking some awesome pictures at Untermeier Gardens, which I'd never been to before. I have no idea how that has passed me in my Hastings journey, but it was beautiful. I will definitely be going back. And then we took the bus to New Rochelle, and we danced the night away, and it was crazy and a whole lot of fun. Plenty of well-dressed superintendents were there. And I also wanted to congratulate everyone who was selected for next year's Peer Leadership Group. The announcement and the list went out last week, and the official meeting where this year's PLs will pass on to the next generation is going to happen early next week. Ella and I are currently in the midst of interviewing for next year's liaison, so we have had the written applications being submitted, and those were due a couple of weeks ago, and we just had our first in-person interview this afternoon, and we've got a whole bunch more throughout the rest of the week. So we're currently working our way through preparing for the interviews and discussing with applicants and the rest of our little panel that we've got going, so it's very exciting.
And how many people applied?
We had, this year, we had nine applicants. But yes, all very exciting, all very good candidates, so still a tough decision. So next, not this coming Friday, but next week is the, first off, the last day of internships, which is so mind-boggling, but it is also Hillside's Field Day, so it's one of the most fun events of the year. Students can show off their spirit for their team and for the school. So in the spirit of the event, I'll put forth my official Board Liaison stance on the event, which is Go Yellow Team. And the Memorial Day Parade was also last week. I really wish I could have been there, but I'm sure you all can tell me more about it. And last on my part is just a huge, huge shout-out to two of my really great friends, Natalie Garson and Adam Greenwald, who were just announced as the valedictorian and soliditorian, respectively. So you guys all saw Adam present his findings through science research last meeting, so I just really wanted to shout them out and spread the love.
So lots of big ones for Hastings kids this weekend. For starters, I want to congratulate everyone who has had their works presented in the art show, because truly Hastings has some amazing artists out there that I feel like we don't appreciate enough, and honestly, seeing how their art is showcased in the art shows, like, it's just truly inspiring and makes me want to try to. I will also give a congratulations to Avery Euler, who won, who won the NCTE Writing Award, so very, very impressive, and I want to give her the biggest congratulations, because Lord knows, I cannot write like that. Also, congratulations to our Varsity Softball Team, who are now the Section One Champions. They won ten to nine on Saturday, and they will continue to the regional finals as one of the top teams in the state, and this is actually making Hastings history. Also, congratulations to the Varsity Baseball Section One Class B Runners Up. I'm so proud of all our teams, and we also have more winners. We're the Varsity Track Section One Class C Podium Winners, we're Caitlin Thomas, Zain Morgan, Claire Grishko, and Sammy Goyle Hoyle. So I'm so proud of our athletes, and these people work so hard, especially with juggling their sports and school and all their extracurriculars, so congratulations to everyone. And finally, Saturday was the Junior Summer Science Fair. It was certainly an experience, to say the least, but I would say the award ceremony was a lot, where there is glow sticks, like, getting thrown in the air, beach balls, lots of lights, it's really fun, very loud, but we are all having such a great time. So most students were judged four times, either by a volunteer or, or a volunteer judge or a senior from other schools, but it was also truly a joy where you could connect with the other participants, and I made three new friends. I also would say that Hastings had many wins varying from third to first place, so I'm truly proud of all of us and how far we've come in the science research program. And also, we are presenting on Wednesday our posters for the information session for next year's science research participants, so I cannot wait to meet all the new science enthusiasts.
I will add that for the first time in recent memory, the principal and the assistant principal of high school rode the bus to the prom.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
That is, that is very accurate.
And they came dancing off the bus, which I noticed, so I was very impressed.
I had, my group of friends was sitting in the back of the bus, and we were, you know, cracking jokes, having a lot of fun, and we pull up to, to the venue, and Mr. Kleiman stands up two seats behind all of us and walks up the bus. So that was a startling experience, but.
Let me just add, I appreciate Ella, you bringing up the science fair, because Ms. Chandrov sent that information, so we'll be sharing out all of that good news. To put a few numbers there, there's seven-hundred-and-ninety-four projects presented, it's an uncommon science fair the summers won, it's rare in the nation of that extent, from thirty-eight different high schools, and Hastings received eleven, eleven different awards across that, with the largest number in the first-place category, but I think Ella's sharing that spirit and the whole commitment is what matters most to me on that. And we do have quite a robust science program. We are addressing, as Tara knows, more demand than supply, even with that third year. We've had a very thorough, careful process. Wherever I've been and there's been a science research program, this has been, this is really one way above its weight class in success, even in lesser places, there is more demand than supply, so it is unfortunately something we, and working through, it's a bit of a growing pain with adding that third year. But I just want the board to know we're paying attention, and Mr. Kleiman, Ms. Ware, working with Chandrov, backed up by Dr. Samansky, are being very careful in responding to, you know, concerns and questions that have come in about the process, but we're being careful and thorough, and just I wanted to flag the good news, and also, with growth comes sometimes a few growing pains, and that's what's happening there.
All right, we're going to be moving on to the presentation portion of the evening, and tonight's topic is going to be the DASSA presentation, which will be shared with us by the three APs, Mr. LaRocco, Mr. Waldeck, and Ms. Ware. So we're looking forward to hearing a thorough and exciting presentation.
So as everybody's getting settled, I just want to introduce, in my role as the district-level Dignity Act Coordinator, DASSA is a very important state law, and it is designed as a foundational component to protecting the wellness of all of our students and also our values. We want to make sure we're creating spaces where there is a very positive climate, we have a welcoming and inclusive environment, we have spaces where students are not distracted by things that are going on in their interactions and can focus on learning and their connections and their sense of belonging with others, and also that they can experience wellness, so that DASSA allows us to couple accountability and also learning. So tonight, the APs, who are also the building-level Dignity Act Coordinators, will be speaking about what the Dignity for All Students Act is, the protected characteristics, incidents, and how they get handled, Dignity Act Coordinators, about the Dignity Act Coordinator and what their role is at the building level, the reporting process, and then finally, the investigation and determination process. So I will turn it over.
Thank you, Dr. Samansky. I'm Mike LaRocco, I'm the Assistant Principal here at Hillside, and I'm co-presenting with Ms. Ware of the high school AP and future interim principal of FMS, Mr. Waldeck. And the bulk of this presentation is pulled from Mr. Waldeck's deck that he created for FMS back in the fall, early winter, one of his first presentations to the community. So thank you, Dan, for doing all that work for us. All right, so what, what is DASSA? And we're going to refer to it as much as possible as dignity, so we keep that word coming out and coming alive, because that really is the essence of what this work is. So over a dozen years ago, this important law was put into place to address bullying and discrimination, ultimately to try to promote a safe and supportive learning environment for all students, so they're free from harassment, bullying, and discrimination. And like I said, we're going to try to keep it to the Dignity Act and try to pull away from DASSA, because dignity is that really important word that we want to carry through all of our work. So what is the Act? So it's a framework that all schools are required to use when reporting and investigating a incident pertaining to DASSA. Staff are trained on preventing and stepping in and intervening, and we want to make sure that we're also communicating appropriately with families, that UA know what steps are on, and then what are the findings of these investigative pieces. So we want to make sure we're protecting students from harassment, bullying in person or online, and also making sure that they're not being discriminated by employees or other students. And most importantly, I think on this slide is that last one, where we're not trying to increase punishment, per se, we're trying to understand what the dynamic is, so that we can step in and really help to support and bring the school back to a safe learning environment with less and fewer incidents of bullying. So what does, what does the Dignity Act cover? Well, it first starts off here with all of these tiles, which got expanded in twenty nineteen by the Crown Act, so we have race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic group. If any of these things come up along the way for a student that's not feeling respected or seen, these are some things that could roll into that, which would start that process. We want to make sure that we are addressing things head-on in a timely fashion, so that people all feel seen and appreciated and respected. So as it relates to an incident, anytime that there's an event, it could be a one singular event, or maybe there's a series of events along the way that prompt that, we want to make sure we're looking into it to see, is this an imbalance of power, per se? Is there one person who's using their position, their place, their, their, their status to dominate over another person? And in that case, that's something where we then take and work with afterwards to try to get people back to a much better place. So we want to make sure that we're using the code of conduct to make sure that these things that take place are followed through to a T on that respect, and if something doesn't necessarily rise to a Dignity Act infraction, doesn't mean that it's not a code of conduct infraction. In most cases, there is something to work on and address with, and that's something that will work with the students and the families on. So if there's any inappropriate behaviors, oh, excuse me, and there can be some behaviors that are accidental, maybe they bumped into somebody, but because you may have a history, that person may perceive they did it on purpose, that's a conversation that happens afterwards to then get an understanding. And it could also be a student maturity level that's influencing those pieces. So if there's a really young student who's using very choice words that they might not realize has a lot of weight to it, there's a, there's an education piece that goes into that versus the same scenario with a much older kid, they most likely may know better, and in that case, that's a different response. So we want to make sure that we're, we're addressing the situation based on the students in front of us and making sure that they're appropriate across the board. And then lastly, all of us are trained yearly, we have to take refresher courses on how to identify, like, if an, if an incident is a DASSA or Dignity Act-related infraction. Okay, so now I'm going to pass over to Ms. Ware to continue on.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, so, I was like, click this, excellent. So just along those same lines, there's the definition of what is harassment and what is bullying, because obviously, if a student does not feel safe, that is very serious for Hastings. So one of the things we went through is what would consider harassment or bullying, and as Dan mentioned, there is this imbalance of power, there's just this repetition, and there is this intent to harm, but specifically, it means that a student is coming to school and they feel and they feel that, that their social, emotional health, that their physical health, something is being affected substantially. Maybe it caused their physical safety, maybe it might expect to cause physical injury, like a fight that might happen or emotional harm to that student from repeated, repetition and so forth. So all of this comes under what is harassment and bullying. As well, cyberbullying is obviously also a point that we actually investigate too, something that happens off school property that's brought to our intention, could cause a risk in school and could make school feel unsafe for the student, so we clearly take that just as seriously. So harassment and bullying fall under that creation of a hostile environment. And I know we both mentioned this, but these are kind of the three parts of it, which is that there's an imbalance of power. So it could be they're using their popularity and they're getting their friends to rile against, or maybe even an imbalance of power in their strength. Repetition, the student says something, as Mike said earlier, that they didn't think would be harmful, but then they keep saying it after we teach them that it's harmful. So that repetition shows that they're trying to be a bully or they're trying to harass. The last thing, intent to harm. What they're saying, is it truly intending to harm someone? So if another student is intending the harm, that is something we take very serious as well. So to the point at the bottom that says bullying is not accidental when it comes to a DASA-related event, it means that these three things are happening, that there's an imbalance of power, that it's repeated, and there's an intent to harm. We're all here today because we are the Dignity Act Coordinators for our particular school. So we are the, the staff that this would happen to be reported to and obviously Melissa Samansky as well for the district. So this is a little bit, Mike already went over this, but we are all trained and on the website and on this PowerPoint is the information of how to contact us. And as well, we do not take this lightly, it's very serious to us, so there is a timely manner when anything's reported to us. Staff must let us know within 24 hours of any incident that they see, witness, or even hear about. Verbally, they report it to us and then a written report is filed within two days of that initial allegation or file. So I'm going to pass it over to Dan that's going to go into more detail what's, that happens and comes on our desk.
Thank you, Tara. So this is a little bit more information about how to reach us. We are the Dignity Act Coordinators within the district and we're, our oversight is Melissa Samansky. We do have a DASA Incident Reporting Form, which is currently on the HOH District Website, and that is the best way to gain access to the form. This form is available for, for students, for families, and for staff and we utilize it in that way. It gets filled out and then submit to one of us at each location. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what happens after a report is received. So the, the, the report really initiates some next steps for the DASA Coordinator, which includes conducting a thorough and timely investigation. Both the accused and the complainants, along with any witnesses, are interviewed and they're interviewed by the DASA Coordinator themselves. In that, we notify families of that conversation and that would again, in some situations, extend to witnesses who may have heard something that took place at school, that would fall into that category of hostile environment, just getting them, and making them aware that, that something has taken place at school and that we are working to address it. At that point, we make a determination and in some situations, we may apply the district discipline code, which is part of the overarching district code of conduct. This can include consequences in addition to our restorative approach as a district. While there is no legal timeline as long as, for as long as a investigation should take to complete, we believe it's in the best interest to be as timely and as prompt on this and accurate as possible. So a material incident is defined as a single verified incident or a series of verified, verified incidents that, where a student is subjected to this type of harassment, then we're talking about an infraction to DASA. Okay? If it is determined that a material incident has taken place, again, we're going to open up that code of conduct. If it, if we find that the incident is not a material incident, so it does not infract on DASA, that doesn't mean that the incident didn't occur. So we could have a situation where something has happened, it's still an infraction to our code of conduct, but it not, it might not necessarily mean that they're, that we infracted on DASA. This is often a very common misunderstanding, so I think it's important for everyone to kind of hear that. All students deserve to feel safe and supported in our, our school environments and there are action steps that we can take to ensure that our students are safe regardless of the outcome of any such DASA investigation. Okay? As we conclude, here are some of our responsibilities. So if the investigation reveals that harassment, bullying, and discrimination has occurred, the school has a responsibility to take prompt action with a view towards these bullet points. Ending the harassment, bullying, and discrimination, eliminating any hostile environment, creating a more positive school culture and climate, preventing reoccurrence of such behavior, and ensuring the safety of the students against whom the harassment, bullying, or discrimination was directed. Discipline will be consistent with, again, the code of conduct and include a measured, balanced, and age-appropriate response that makes appropriate use of prevention, education, intervention, and discipline. We take those considerations very seriously and we obviously bring in some of the nature of what has taken place, the developmental age of the offending student, and any progressive discipline when it comes to the history of problem behaviors. Okay? I want to thank the board for their time and listening to our presentation. We can, any questions?
Can, can one, some, or all of you speak to the connection between what you do in the building level DASA Coordinator role and the connection with the Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator? Because that's a question that I get frequently and I think it would be helpful to just illuminate that.
So again, it depends on what the situation calls for. So if there is a question of someone's race or anything of that matter that falls under the CRSC umbrella, that'll bring, that'll be brought to Dr. Janice Matteo Toledo to help us, kind of guide us through the next steps, or at least just get it on the radar to say, we're working on a situation here that we may need some support in a little while. But it all really depends on what the situation calls for. Are we going to loop them back in? Of course, our first phone calls are going to Bill and Melissa, sorry, Dr. McCursie and Dr. Samansky, to give you a heads up that this is what we're working on and we got it in, so that this way, at least people are ready, so that we're working through this and as all of us have been saying, in a timely and prompt, thorough, but also very careful manner. We want to make sure that we're moving quick, but not too quick. And the whole time we're doing this, we're not making any assumptions about anything, we're just looking for data, information, and then we sit back and then start working on it. And it's never done in isolation. I'm either calling to the middle school for feedback, I'm working with Miss Kayzes on this piece, or anybody else with Janice as well to try to get an understanding. So it's, it's a group effort, it's not just a solo individual of us in our own buildings working alone.
Thank you. And I'll just add from the district perspective, on occasion, I'll receive a DASA appeal. So I don't get involved in the investigation, I get a heads up that something will be investigated often, but where my involvement might come in is if an appeal comes. And to the point that Dan made earlier, it's rare that that happens, that it comes to me at the appeals level, because often there might be a finding of a violation of the code of conduct, but it may not necessarily rise to a material incident under DASA. So it's not to say that there's not been a problem, but just under the DASA framework, it may not be, you know, logged as a material incident.
So my question is, I appreciate seeing everything laid out here as an explanation, but I'm wondering, as building leaders, how do you actually foster an environment such that a child who might be subject to a type of incident that would fall under this rubric would actually feel comfortable coming forth and asking for assistance? Because I understand for those people who are adults, they can see something and observe and they can report something, but for the person who's actually in the position of being mistreated, how does it work given that children are at different developmental stages in each of your respective schools? How do you make it a comfortable environment so that they can confide in somebody that they need help?
So I think it's important to note that that is a, that's a task that we need to collectively be thinking about, right? Certainly, as DASA coordinators, I could speak for all of us, we're, we're very invested in this work, but we also understand that this is a, a law that protects students and if students don't feel like they can advocate for themselves, they may not come forward and bring this to our attention. And that leaves a gap in communication that again, creates a situation that we, might be an issue that we want to tackle together. So again, I think it's first and foremost, when those, those things come up and a student visits our office and makes a report to, let's say, our main office, to really help them understand that they're doing the right thing. And really, for me in the middle school, I have noticed that that culture begins to spread and people feel that they can be more comfortable coming forward and saying that they have an issue with somebody. It's really about getting to know the students on a, on a name-to-name basis, but again, what extends beyond just knowing them by name, who they are as students, where might these things be taking place, so that I can either position myself there or have a monitor there. There, there's a lot that comes into that, but I think there are so many different strategies that we can talk about that works to address that and I know that we're, we're continuing to be committed to some of that.
Thank you. And just to add to that, since I was like brand new, so it's a great question, like how do I know my students if they don't even know me? I just, being at Hastings, just knowing the school culture and the staff, like the four or five months I've been here, a teacher might notice that a kid's head's down, a teacher might notice that the student said something a little bit off and they'll bring it directly to our guidance team, school psychologists, counselors, right away on it, like calling the student because they've built those relationships for years. So to your question of, is it always a student that reports it? It's not always, we might see something a little off in my question. We also have a lot of staff that have relationships, and myself included, trying to develop them where we might ask a student and they might say something about their friend, hey, can you check on them that something went through? So to Dan's part, it is a whole community, a whole village of, of really making that safe space and if they don't find safe space with me right away because they don't know me, there's going to be someone on staff that does and they know to get that information to me through my guidance team. So I will speak for the high school solely that it's very preventative, so we don't have, to Dr. Samansky's point, a lot of DASA because it's preventative. As soon as little things are noticed, they're addressed right away in a restorative and a community way that it never, it doesn't escalate to that point. And I think that comes from the efforts of the culture and the staff and the students and the team and everyone working as collaborative unit. So it's great to be part of that now.
Thank you.
And at Hillside, well, we start with the year off where we're meeting with all the groups to kind of go through our code of conduct and expectations and say, here's how we play well, here's how we share, here's how we work together. And if there's, at any point, you don't see this happening for you or for others, please speak up. So we, we encourage the students, if you see something, bring it to an adult, whether that's an adult here at school or at home, or they can come straight to me, they, they have access to me at any point that they need. That's something that we talk to and coach through. Being that this is, coming to the conclusion of my fourth year here, I'm starting to know storylines and personalities and trends across the years, so there are certain individuals that I'm kind of monitoring to see how things are going, proactive check-ins as well to see, how's your day going, what else is happening in your world, just to build that, you know, that, that relationship up so that if something were to happen or come, come across them, they can come to me and they feel like they have another adult that they can just reach out to. So we try to be as proactive as possible, empower the students to speak up, but also keep our eyes and ears out to see, is there anything you're seeing out at the yard that doesn't look right? Let's check in and work as a team to kind of make sure everyone's doing all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know something that families have sometimes wondered and I know that it's presented in board meetings, but is there an easy or an accessible place for parents to see the DASA data? And then there's a, there are places, space for people to see where like complaints were, but maybe they didn't make it up to the DASA level? Because I, I feel like sometimes there's a discussion in the community that things are happening, but there's, they're not collected and not, then it becomes in some ways like a silencing of some of the events rather than a conversation. And just sort of your thoughts on that and then any kind of, based on the different instances that have occurred this past year or the past few years, although some of us are newer, but there are things you can see, like looking at that data that could happen at the middle school in terms of programming, or the high school, or the elementary, that like, we're seeing these trends of behavior? Okay, let's take that and do something really proactive so we can begin to see change.
I can initiate that one and then if anyone wants to add. So annually, we've now folded that in as part of the State of the District Report. And one of the things that we've been experiencing as a challenge in an area for growth is being able to showcase the number of incidents that were founded violations under the code of conduct and the themes of those things versus how many things were founded for each building under DASA and the themes of those things. And so I'll just plant that seed and say, recently, as a team, we were working on that together because we have a data repository system that has specific codes, for lack of a better word, where when an incident is logged, if it is founded under DASA, the, we are required to report to the state. And so that internal system talks to the state system and it pulls, right? It pulls all of the demographic information, the type of incident. The other thing it does is it allows us to categorize the type of what we call local incidents, violations under the code of conduct. But what our team here, especially Dan Waldeck, who I will highlight, and we have all worked together very collaboratively on this, has flagged is that what we're seeing in terms of patterns of behavior are not matching the default codes in the system. So we have been working together to reinvent that and to find some themes that are aligned with the discipline codes for each building, then working with our data coordinator at the district level to try to take the actual system, the data repository, and make it match what we need to be able to make sure that we are addressing what the community has been asking for, because it is really important data and it is a point where we can grow. I don't know if any of you want to speak more thoroughly to that, but I think that's it in a nutshell, but we do need to do better on reporting because not only does it help us formatively to address the types of behaviors that we're seeing in a very proactive way, but also it builds trust when people see that we have our eye on things and we're able to transparently report out. We just, we haven't had the right structure to be able to do it as well as we want.
And also for the community to understand what are some of the, the patterns and themes that we need to work on as a community as well.
Right, work on it together.
Are there any more questions?
So I want to thank the team. You have the board before you. This is recorded, it's now also in the public record, the document, and this is the first time in recent memory that both Melissa, as the district-wide coordinator, each of the buildings has presented on this. We thought it'd be very, very important to bring this forward in this way. We'll do it annually now. Later, in the State of the District, which the board will see in July, we will have behavioral data in there to a certain extent. So it's all part of our attempt to be very open and clarifying for the board and through that for the community. And I'm going to follow Mike's lead to thank Dan for, you know, you know, breaking the ice on this with the presentation you did at FMS. That was the test, that was well-received by families, I think there were 80 or so in the room, since I now know the district pretty well, families in particular have been often having good, good questions about this. So we, we have to keep educating and I love the fact that we move away from DASA but talk about dignity, because one of the things I'm trying to say right now, anywhere I go, is it's about dignity and respect, because we are in an era right now where some other phrases are getting questioned. You cannot question being a human and caring about dignity and respect. So I, I love how we are trying to phrase it that way here in Hastings and I thank the three of you because there are many more people listening in addition to the board tonight, so thank you.
And I just want to thank all of you for doing the great work that you do and also reflective and very aware of, of potential blind spots and really very thoughtful and very invested in data and supporting all of our students. So thank you.
This is your chance to flee, folks, you can go. So we're now going to move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. McCursie?
Yes, and I'll, I'll be brief. I, we follow on, maybe in the shape of reports, I think Dr. Samansky and Ms. Carvalho were dancing between official titles and first names, so Melissa Marine will share. I did tuck in part of mine, picking up on the Good Student Leader Report. I think we're also on the Board Liaison, aiming to have an announcement at the June 17th meeting, is what Mr. Kleiman advised me, so that timing and process is very helpful because that, that is a standard annual moment. That is the official final meeting of, of the board this year, so it'll be, yes, a certain KI's final meeting and then it's a good time to announce that, that new person, the new junior to fill the seat as Ella moves into the seat. to fill the seat as Ella moves into the senior seat, the 12th grade seat. Please go ahead.
I was just going to say, we like to try and have the new liaison with us here at the June 17th meeting, just so they can get a feel before they jump right in.
Right. Yeah. The other part of the report is, and Alex is not here, but many of the board have watched him. As one community member said the other day, remember, he also has a job. He is spending so much energy and time on the bond. He was in a meeting today with us, again, with the families most, and Maureen was there, most concerned from Proposition 3. So it was our boosters, both the adults, but then Siri, and now to be known as Rob Gentleman. He shifted from Bobby, I'm very pleased. He came and told me, I'm Rob. I said, that's great, and that's my brother's name, so there you go. So they were there, talking about how to get much more support for Proposition 3. We can't, in our office, ask people to vote yes, but we appreciate all the energy. So, and Alex is right there. And what we're going to be doing is continue to be very, very active on the bond, bringing information, bringing clarity. People will vote their conscience on all three parts. I want to keep stressing that. We want to, over the next two weeks, keep bringing clarifying information. And there is a lot of growing interest and activity, so I think it will be a lively couple of weeks. I know the board joins me in this. We will be only but respectful, only but dignified in this approach. And there's some very particularly difficult questions on, in the propositions for some people in the community, and we respect that. And we also though want to do everything we can to bring forth information. I think in two days, the newsletter will be mailed to all households. It's a bond dedicated newsletter. We also prepared some, if you will call palm cards, sheets, that the students themselves will be distributing, just to help give information on everything. So we'll be very, very active, but again, trying to be very, very respectful of it. So that, right now, is the extent of my report, other than lastly say, the great basketball coach named Phil Jackson, at one point he played for the Knicks.
Now, when he was back later in the year.
I know he played for the Knicks. In 1972, I was cheering for the Knicks, so who can clock that one? And he was there. So anyway, he has a great phrase, for energy, bring energy. So that's what I'm hoping for, that we as a district can close with some Phil Jackson energy. So, all right? So I'm now passing the baton back to, I chair the president. The president is on the way back, I'm told.
Terrific. I'm going to now pass on the rest of the agenda, or the next phase of the agenda, to Dr. Samansky.
Very good. So I spoke more at length at the last Board of Education meeting about many of the things that the committees have been working on. Tonight, I just wanted to give a brief update on where we are with the science of reading. And so our Hillside literacy team has been working together. They had an extended morning session today, where they are in the process of reflecting on instructional best practices that are outlined by the state education department. And it's specifically around kindergarten through, and it's fourth grade for us, even though the state is looking at pre-K through three. Literacy instructional best practices specifically in the areas of phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, reading fluency, comprehension, and oral language. And a great deal of time was spent today, really thinking about and reflecting upon our program, and the extent to which each of these areas is fully developed, partially developed, or not evident, based on the benchmarks, the state, the indicators that the state has laid out. So that is in process. We have a lot more to do. But that team is working in a very robust way, in a very thoughtful, reflective way. I want to also credit Amy Casas for taking the lead as the building leader at the helm of helping support that reflection. We will be working with Hope Weinberg, who is also the person that we've engaged to conduct our audit, to then support us with the attestation part that goes to the state. So that will be happening in the next week, in terms of meeting with her around attestation next steps.
Thank you, Dr. Samansky.
I'm restarting my.
And moving on to a report from our business official, Maureen Carvalho. Update on the work?
Well, I'm going to update you on two things. So being that this is June, this is the end of our fiscal year, coming to a close in the next few weeks, and we're busy in my office, just trying to prepare the closeouts. We're beginning our external, and starting our next round of internal audits in the next few weeks. We already were loading up to the portal today, the things in which they start to kind of filter through, because again, they're auditing a full fiscal year. So we are very busy preparing for that. And then in addition to that, at our next board meeting, which I do need to have us put that on, that whatever it is, that agenda setting piece, each year at the end of June, prior to the official close of the fiscal year, I will then now report out to the board kind of where, it's like unofficial, because it's not an audited financial, but we'll look at basically where we find ourselves at our fiscal end year. We are required to make our designations to fund balance or reserves at that time. We can make some modifications to that later in the summer, but the majority of those recommendations will be at the next meeting. The board is required, you know, we'll do a presentation, we're going to go through kind of where we see either positive or negative variances, highlight that. Again, we'll go back through it when the audit is finalized. But because we are required before the end of the fiscal year to make those designations to fund balance, we'll have to kind of go through it and review again, both the types of fund balance, how much we are either taking from this year or putting back in, and you know, do a full review. And that's really tied to that five-year plan in which we review during the budget process, which does include a review of our reserves. Now we're updating that to reflect where we stand at the end of the year. So that, that is, yeah, I'm kind of a little, it's a lot, I have to get everything, try to squeeze everything a little by next week, so we have, we can have that presentation. And again, it's good for the public too, because at that point too, we also review the different types, the different statutory regulations around each fund balance. It is something then, we put on our website, just for people to be able to review, because we do talk about a lot of them, and each of them are a bit different, and how they're funded, and how much, and the limitations of that. So that will be at our next meeting. And then again, like I said, we'll be jumping right into our audit. This year is quite early, so that's not great, but it is. We'll be having our year-end audit, things that third week in July, so busy times. As far as a flood update, the contractors have been back on site for the last few weeks. We have our meetings every Tuesday. I was not, well, obviously, we didn't have one this past Tuesday when schools closed, but the contractors were in and they were working, as that was a workday for them. They're busy framing. We're really in crunch time, as Bill, I think it was mentioned earlier, our goal is to open up school for our students, to be back in the space the first day of school. We'll probably be right down to that wire, like right, I mean possibly even into Superintendent's Conference, you know, just meeting final, I'm talking about final walkthroughs, final punch lists and all the rest. Our architects are finalizing their submission to the state, because as you may recall, the level of work that now was required in the FMS wing, the Farragut Wing, required us to now do full sets of plans for the state and bring it, and we had to do a full code analysis, which in order to get, so there's two pieces, we need our contractors to be done, but we also need to have a certificate of occupancy to reoccupy the space, without submitting those plans to the state. So we're actually submitting the full plans with an emergency, and the board opted to throw those resolutions. It allows us to not have to go through the, you know, we're kind of doing these things in tandem, where usually you have to wait for all the approvals from the state, and then be able to do any work. And this, but it is really important that our architects, and they've been spending a lot of time, because without, it could be done, but if we don't have approval from the state, legally, we could not reoccupy that space. We do need that certificate of occupancy given back to us, and that requires all, like a lot of punch list items, ensuring that the designs that are submitted and being done. So it's a much more interactive process than typically, like usually we're waiting on the, like in this space as an example, it was done, and we were waiting for the CO to occupy, rather than not reoccupy, it was a new space. So this one is, that's why I don't know if you've heard the architects speak to this, like really critical date in getting all the paperwork in the beginning of June, and we are, again, but the good news is, so far, we are tacking, you know, we're staying on the schedule which we laid out for ourselves. So, yeah, code compliance, I'm trying to think what else. It'll be, I'm sure there'll be some different things. We're still engaged with the insurance company, and as you know, the board released the reserves to allow us to not delay the work being done. As we know, this will be probably, you know, a longer process in terms of the financial end of it. And I think that's why, when we look at the reserves next week, it's going to be, you're going to see that if we do need to use that money, our reserves are going to be taking a tremendous hit. And then, you know, where that leaves us, because as we go into July, the other thing I would recommend, or one of your summer meetings, is to really start looking at, and we do this every month, because we provide you reports of expenditures, warrants, and revenues. It's really important that even since this budget's been set, even prior to, after the board adopted it, there were already, oh, well, like, we may need this, you know, so there are already, you know, there are things in which may change a bit. So I think we want to, being we know we're on almost a very closer austerity budget, especially with the fact we're draining a lot of our reserves to make this work get done, temporarily, it's still cash flow for us. It will, you know, we definitely need to be keeping a much closer eye on things, and as things, you know, come up that people may say, well, you know, we forgot what we wanted now, well, again, I'm not saying we're going to, that's an example, it's like, we still have children that have come in that we didn't anticipate with special needs that we, you know, hadn't planned for. So we're already finding ourselves, you know, kind of going into next year with a much tighter belt than we initially thought. So I'm all doom and gloom for tonight, but no, but it is important, I think it's just, again, this is one of your major things with fiscal stewards of the district, and in order to make any decision, you know, sometimes things seem minor, but everything adds up. So.
Maureen, thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to public comment. Good evening.
Sorry, I can't find that.
Oh, the mic's there, yeah.
I just wanted to.
Try again? Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah, there we go.
I wanted to speak on the first read of the Internet-enabled device policy, and thank you for the opportunity to do that. In regard to the definition section, 1B, Internet-enabled devices supplied by the school district that are used for an educational purpose. I just want to speak to some of the practical realities of internet access in the middle school. My eighth grader reports using their school Chromebook to access two to three hours of social media each day, mostly YouTube. Some of their peers prefer Netflix. When I spoke to them about the code of conduct violation of that use, and the current consequence, which I believe is listed as in-school suspension, they asked how the school would manage to suspend all of the students at once. A child who is not allowed any social media access at home, as recently as last week, could open a TikTok account using an outside-school email address on a school Chromebook during the school day. I know many parents who are knowledgeable and aware, they check their kids' phones, they have oversight. The one place where they feel completely helpless is with school-issued devices. The one place where we think our kids will be safe from access to the internet would be school, and yet, that's where a child will describe their internet use as addictive. In regard to the section on storage, students who choose or whose parents/persons in parental relation allow students to bring their internet-enabled devices to school must follow the school-specific storage regulations, et cetera. The policy at this point doesn't seem to elaborate on what those storage regulations are, but the May 30th letter from Dr. McCursie stated that the preliminary plan for storage of devices will be an honor system, whereby those students who bring personal devices to school will be required to keep them in their lockers or backpacks for the entire school day. Just in the last couple of weeks, I have personally watched a video taken on a student's phone in a classroom during school hours. Ask any middle school student, the honor system does not work. I want to ask that we name this accurately as an issue of health and safety. We have a mandate from the state, because social media is a threat to our children, and the stakes are very high. I'm asking us to please be bold and courageous, take the extra measures now, not later, and see this opportunity from the state as the gift that it can be, for us to really do everything that we can right now for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to business items, are there any questions regarding business items 1 through 10? Yeah, take your time.
I don't have a question so much as a comment on business item two, and I just wanted to express my gratitude to the community for its 77% approval of our budget for this past year. I think that's a resounding success and a stamp of approval for a hard-fought and compromised-upon budget over the course of time, and a lot of feedback from the community, and input, obviously, from our most important staff and administrators. So thank you, and similarly, along with the rest of the election results, I'd like to extend my congratulations to the two trustees who'll be serving next year, our returning trustee, Maureen Santana, and also to David Weinstein, who'll be joining us as of July 1st, which I think is wonderful. And finally, I want to extend my thanks to all people who step forward to run, to serve as a trustee. It's not easy to do that, and so, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
That's lovely. Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding business items 1 through 10? Is there a motion to approve business items 1 through 10?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to placement and services for CSC and CPSC. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our placement and services for CSC and CPSC?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel, as a consent agenda, are there any questions or comments regarding our appointments, our amendments, our resignations, or leaves of absence?
I do. Normally, I wouldn't go into such great detail, but with the Ipoletto appointment, there's no, there are no dates. So I have no understanding in their resume, and really in the cover letter, like how long they've served in their current capacity, their level of experience, and just because, you know, all the teaching positions are so important, I just would love a little more information about them. Like there's, I mean, there are no dates on the resume. All the other ones look really good, and I'm sure this one is good as well, there's just such limited information, and then even in the cover letter itself, we don't get a sense of their years of service. And, you know, given the new science standards, and it's such a rigorous position, I just was particularly curious.
Can anyone comment, administration, on the lack of dates, or if that's something that's common, or if we have that data elsewhere?
I mean, that resume is uncommon. I mean, Melissa, you might have some insights on it, because we did review it, and it is specific to service, you know, time served, if you will, time worked, as to what the recommended level is. This is someone newer in their career, this is someone who had, as you can see, had placements across different sectors, and this has been a very difficult to staff area. The supply is quite lean, so I think the years here are limited, that's why you're seeing step two at the start. So it's, this is a relatively new individual. You can see that that high school teaching experience currently is, I think roughly about a year.
At a Catholic school?
Yes, with a substitute teaching experience. Has been a very active coach, as you can see in the rowing category. But this is not a brand-new entry, but close. This is an early career entry, and you can see that based on where they're falling on the step in scale. The interview, I mean, Melissa and I are at the tail end of a thorough process, I mean, the recommendation did come clearly, but it is a very hard-to-staff area. That's one.
No, I understand that. I just was surprised, I mean, especially compared to all the other ones too, there's really, there's limited information.
So I think going forward, we want to make sure that, you know, we're squaring that circle, if you like. I mean, we have to do that. But again, the recommended level's tied to then the conversation with Nicholas as to his years' experience. I don't know, Melissa, if you want to add to that, or not?
Yeah, what I can say is that, first of all, I just sent a quick text to Scott Winn, because he's the person who did the main interview boots on the ground, so I'm not sure the extent to which he's sitting right by his phone, but if I get it, I will make sure that I communicate it. He is very new in his career. The. The indicator is actually with his fingerprint clearance. So if you can take a look, the 2025 date there.
Yeah.
That's typically the indicator. So he has not had more than a couple of years of experience. However, he has been able to go through a process with a high level of rigor and speak to the P-12 science learning standards and speak to them in a very actionable way through the portrait of a Hastings Learner authentic learning lens, probing culturally-responsive pedagogies, probing use of formative assessment data. So there are many types of questions without giving the actual questions that we ask our candidates.
Yeah, Melissa, why don't you go soup the nuts? Because it may be helpful, as new as Nicholas is, he had to go through a process to get this far. Just so, you know.
That's right.
Why don't you review what goes on?
Yes, so first, there is a screening process. And then what winds up hap, and that's often with, at the building level, that is also in close connection with Melissa Shandroff. So screening resumes. Then they go to a committee process. Then there is a demo lesson that happens. And so the demo happens, and then there is additional conversation, follow-up with the candidate after the demo lesson. Then the candidate comes to us. So Bill and I interviewed this person. And then there's the negotiation that happens. But some of the areas that I mentioned before are all other areas that are vetted. The question is not only a valid one, it's an important one.
No, it is, because I look at many resumes, and this one is not, you know, it stands out.
It is atypical to not have the dates listed on a resume. However, being able to bring a wealth of expertise and strong performance throughout a long process is a great thing. And having someone earlier in his career and be able to speak in that level of depth is important. I have that text back, so thank you, Scott Winn, if you're listening. He said he believes he did 1.5 years at Harlem Prep and one year at S-.
Silesian.
Silesian, yeah. So total two and a half years where we are right now. And then being able to move forward with us. So I hope that answers the questions.
Yeah, good question and good answer as well.
Great question.
And he'll have an experienced mentor working with him?
Yes. He will have an experienced mentor and one of the best department chairpersons in science in the entire state, in my professional opinion.
Yeah, let me, are there other questions in sections? There's a larger takeaway I want to grab. And Melissa and I haven't fully talked about it, but in a separate meeting, we want to, it relates to the tenure write-ups and it relates to these. We're going to systematize those for next year.
Great.
And I didn't know, Dr. Semansy is going to be asked to work with the principals and assistant principals on systematizing that. So there's a template, and a template can get rigid, but just so, not a rigid, but you know very clearly you as a board and then the public, there's real consistent write-up.
Absolutely, no, no, and because we have so many new hires coming.
And we probably will lean on Amy Kayzes' model just to make it efficient and easy. But it's, it's in my brain here to go to Dr. Semansy. But I just want, it's a good moment, what you're raising, just I want to make sure we're paying attention to that.
Yeah, because it's that whole pipeline, right, to tenure, to make sure we track, we support, but we also assess and share that.
And I've already systematized it for myself quarterly for folks.
Yeah, and I, you know, I want to be cautious not to have, this, we're not talking about Nicholas anymore. Now we're talking about the larger, we do need to look at teachers earlier in their career. We have gotten great, gained great ground on that. And particularly in the sciences, when they can work under the guidance of Melissa Shandroff. We see that as a positive. I know there's some would want us to go later in the, in one's career, but I think there's some good early-in-their-career energy. And to swing back to Nicholas, as we are in a public meeting, we've been questioning him. To interview him was, it was a delightful interview. He took the interview with his newborn in his hand, and he managed to juggle that virtually. Don't worry, he didn't come into the office, but virtually. So it was really, really, we want to foster Nicholas.
Excellent.
He's an incredibly thoughtful, up-and-coming teacher, and we want to get the most out of him.
Great.
Thank you. That was a very informative discussion, frankly. Thank you, Catherine. That was great. Oh, I'm sorry. Any other questions or comments regarding our appointments, amendments, resignations, or leaves of absence? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to minutes. This would have been from May 20th. Are there any questions or comments regarding our minutes? Is there a motion to approve our minutes from the May 20th meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to first read. This would be a policies linked to what we were just talking about, to the governor's mandate for us to have bell-to-bell control of Internet-enabled devices. This is policy 2562 and 5695. Anybody from the policy committee wanting to sort of give us a little bit of update? This is first read, so we're not voting on it, just getting background. I will say that, I'm sorry, I cut you off. No, just that they sort of, often in the room is that, you know, we all, we had a pretty strict policy here in Hastings. We expected to kind of have to work on that from a policy perspective. The governors who took that out of our hands, you know, perhaps beneficially. Now it's really about implementation is in the details, so.
Yeah, we just went over the policy that's written before you. One clarification is that non-Internet-enabled cellphones, under the governor's policy, are permitted. So we would have to handle that if a student had a flip phone, right? That would be technically permitted under the governor's. Also, we might have to have a policy in terms of phones in the school. And we have to, we started to review the process of what it looks like to store the phones. But I don't think it's in this policy, the storage piece, right?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to a little if you want me to. So the policy you have here, this is an example where there's going to be the policy and then the regs will be very, very important. And the public comment tonight was excellent, was just hitting spot on a couple of things we have to worry about. So accompanying what's posted here is a memo to the board, a couple-page memo on at least two of the areas, one in particular most challenging from a reg standpoint. We're working in very close coordination with area districts. August 1 is the deadline. By state law, we have to have a policy developed. So most of the area districts are going down the path, as you see here. And I think the, and I don't want to speak for David and Sylvie, but the meeting we had this week, you as a committee felt that as the policy framework, we were pretty close. The key is the regs, and the key is saying that the superintendent, it'll be lots of review. Don't worry, this isn't the superintendent running off to the top of the mountain, coming down with, you know, I'm going with that one, someone to stop, but, meaning coming down with, you know, the Ten Commandments. But rather, it's going to be very inclusive, but the time is tight. The governor did not give us a lot of time. So around us, most districts will be close to adopting this type of policy with that key statement, the superintendent will develop regulations to comply with this policy. We obviously should spend some time on the policy, certainly your committee did. I also wanted to flag, just to help you, that's why I put the memo together and it's posted and sent in terms of the storage, because that's quite pivotal. A lot of discussion times are going on now for several months amongst your administrators, two of whom have experienced in their previous schools, and that's Dan and Tara, as to managing mobile phone use. We were going down, and the memo, which is there, but let me just quickly summarize. We were going down the idea initially of some sealed pouch systems. And that's actually what both Dan and Tara have experienced, with most notably Dan at Wagner. Those are expensive. We're in a very lean moment with our own budget, so we weren't able to go there. We did look for philanthropic help, but that did not pan out. And there are still some logistics realities with that. And we're also finding that almost nobody around us, the other districts, are going down this path. Because most are concerned about the logistics and then the students' workaround abilities with the yonders or like system. So that led us to the idea of storage bins. Some of the districts nearby, and I'm, and almost weekly in discussion with the area superintendents, because the neighbors and what we do matter. Some of them are looking at storage bins, and I had shown an image of that to the policy committee. And then I shared that also with some of the administrators. We would have to have a lot of these all over the school. And how they'd be managed and all the rest is tricky. So for now, and we're going to do some more thinking as we build out the regs, the thought was, let's pilot with great seriousness and oversight this idea of the honor system in storages, excuse me, in lockers or backpacks, because we really don't have any other great options. And then to map out in the regs, which we bring back for discussion, we'll have to figure out how to do that, given, well, you know, it'll be some time issues, kind of how that would be managed. But I think, and this is an example, the rubber meets the road with the administrators in the building, with the students, trying to minimize the load on teachers and make this as manageable as possible. So that, so you're not voting on the regs tonight, but you are voting then to say, storage is a key issue. That's part of what the regs have to address. Another reg area that we flag, which is under exception number one, I'm sorry, exception number two. By the way, exception number one, that can be, the IEPs and the 504s, we have very little example, almost zero now, where devices are part of that. We don't think that's going to be an issue. But number two, that could be an issue. And already some teachers anticipating not having devices have already been looking for workarounds, which might be expensive. So we need to have regulations there. So in summary, talk about the policy, but also keep in mind that the only way to get this working now is to sort of acknowledge, let's get the policy set. And then, you know, we'll roll up our sleeves on the regulations, storage in particular. What counts as educational use is a second. And we will be keeping the board closely informed, and thus the community, who we'll be reaching out to, how we're going to handle this. One thing on consultation we can get to, because that's a key part of the law, it's consultation. So one of Melissa's, a bit on that, then we'll stop and listen, listen to the discussion.
So I had a moment recently at one of my curriculum council meetings, which is a regional meeting with all of the job-like counterparts. So somebody raised the question of this new policy requirement and the extent to which districts have already started digging in with that consultation process. And fortunately, Hastings is one of the districts that's ahead of the pack on this. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of ways that we've already started our consultation process. And then I know outlined under next steps in Bill's letter, it shows some additional things that will be happening. But we have already been having a fair amount of consultation during district-level technology committee meetings and hearing from the district technology stakeholders. Many different groups participate in those meetings, representatives from many different groups, rather. Student Council, Bill and I have lunch sessions with Andy Clayman and Stephen Lopez and representatives from Student Council. And Alex is often at those sessions, too. And so we've had that as a topic of consultation at the table there. PTSA and SEPTA during monthly meetings, we've been able to talk a bit about that and consult in that way. Even harkening back to the Max Stossel Social Awakenings presentation at the middle school and the discussion session that happened, there's a fair amount of information that came through the conversations there that has informed thinking around the policy and the regulations. Board of Education, public comment, people have commented on the 2nd, on the 17th. We're talking a little bit about it now, but that opportunity remains open for consultation, just hearing from public around that. High School Student Forum, so Andy Clayman has hosted high school student forums around this anticipated move and gotten ahead of it, frankly. And having had the opportunity to listen to students, we've had, Senor Lopez has had discussions with student union outside of the monthly luncheons. And also today, at Chair Council, I put this in front of the department chairs, and we talked a bit about the policy. I have a little bit of feedback from them, too, which I will then feed back to the policy committee. But really, listening, understanding that this is an important key issue. And so while it is coming down from the state, there is a lot of investment and care around this use of Internet-enabled devices during the school day and what the shift will mean and the impact that it will have on both teaching and learning and student wellness, frankly. So we are doing a fair amount of consultation. We've done a fair amount of consultation already, and there will still be more ahead.
Can I add, you know, those meetings we had, I guess, the Technology Committee, it was a very, very boots-on-the-ground kind of real meeting where the initial topic was, let's talk about all the ways the kids are going to try and get around this, you know? And we went through all that stuff. But I think one of the key parts that Principal Winn had brought up, I guess he had put out an announcement, was, you know, the other side of things, besides their own personal devices, was the devices that we provide in the school. And his announcement was that the middle school was going to move away from a one-to-one model, not just to not give these devices to students, but pedagogically, to spend more time away from the devices off the screens. Can I quickly read your statement here? This is a letter that he sent out.
On Friday.
On Friday in the FMS newsletter. This is Scott Winn writing, "Based on feedback from students, staff, and families, FMS will be moving away from the current model of the one-to-one Chromebook distribution for students in grades six through eight during the 25, 26 school year, so next year. Similar to grade five, students will have access to Chromebooks during class time, only using them when needed for a specific instructional purpose. The shift will help balance the enhancement of instruction through technology with the amount of time students have direct access to the technology during non-instructional times. More information will be forthcoming about the process we will use to have students return their current Chromebook to the Technology Department." So that's just a very important, you know, and in those meetings, the principals are looking absolutely, you know, holistically, the entirety of how students interact with, you know, Internet-enabled devices.
And just to, I know it's important that Alex brought up the Chromebook issue because, yes, it's in the public comment in a very good way. But this is one of his dilemmas, because personnel, Internet-linked devices would include if I show up with my own laptop from home. I, you know, so we're navigating that. But this, I have to circle back with Scott, because I'm afraid this was a little buried, and I don't mind saying that. I shared it with the board and, you know, the memo over the weekend. But this is a big announcement, and it's coming from a lot of input, a lot of thought. And if I'm understanding it, I'll circle back with Scott and Dan. For those of us, again, I'm saying them in the cafeteria a lot, there is a lot of screen time going on there.
There's a lot.
And, well, I'm actually in there and see it. And that's what we're going after here. It's an aggressive verb, verb format, going after, but that's what we're doing. And so there are going to be some changes, I think, and in favor of what a lot of families have been raising with us.
Absolutely.
And more reason I'm pleased that you voted tonight to have Dan, because Dan knows what's going on. And that's why we want to try and address this. But I will circle back on this one, just to underscore it, to see, and make sure it's getting out to families. But let's have, if you could, board, come back to at least policy. How's that framework feel? And then thoughts on regs?
I have lots of feelings here.
The only reason I'm structuring that is there's a legal August 1 deadline.
No, no, I understand.
For the policy, but the regs are a little more flexible.
I've opened the policy and the regs side by side, because I think it's the regs that I'm challenged by. But the policy, and I checked it out, is it's mostly just talking about how they're not going to have smartphones, tablets. I would say maybe AirPods could be mentioned explicitly, because I think those are used a lot in the high school, and also there's some cheating around those usage. But otherwise, the policy is pretty clear. You don't really bring in the whole honor code and storage piece until the regs, is that correct?
Right.
So I think the policy is pretty innocuous. I think it's really the implementation piece that gets more complicated.
Exactly.
So I have no issue with the policy. I have issue with the implementation.
And maybe if we could, I'm being a little more active here than I should be, Superintendent, but if we could follow Catherine's lead on that and the board agrees, that, what I'm trying to do is sort of partition the issue. So if we can get to, if you as a board say, this policy framework does it, now get busy on the regs, because you only have two meetings left before August 1. And all districts are in this quandary. And that, this is an example where, I'll be quick. They're calling for regionalization. We are working regionally on this. I mean, there's a lot of good care amongst, at least the Riverfront districts in particular, which matters most, right? So I think they're all going to be very close to nail down the policy and then figure out the regs.
Yes.
So policy feedback?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I think that that's just the theme of the meetings we have. Like, the policy is fairly clear. It's all about, the regs have to reflect doable reality, and we don't really know exactly what that is. We don't have any experience from other districts. I mean, it is useful, both Dan and Tara have real experience with this.
Yeah, they do have experience, and I was actually Googling today and like going on my electronic databases to get some data on this, too. There are districts who have done it, right? And some have done it well and not, and I do know that the data's mixed on the storage piece. But everyone knows that when done well, it makes huge cultural shifts and changes within it. So I do think the regulation piece is key, and I can't hold back any longer. The honor code thing, I just don't see working. The honor code thing, I just don't see working, I think, best exemplified at the high school, where we said, students are now allowed to have their own computers, they can only use the Chromebooks. And I know, own computer use is widespread in the high school, because we can't put it on the teachers to implement it. They have such busy, deep, you know, teaching jobs, as is. So I really appreciate when we had a conversation with the principals, how clear they were, I thought, about having the devices gone in the morning and just, so there's no unevenness of implementation, and the messaging is very clear for everyone, and then the kids get them in the evening. And I know it's a cost issue. Maybe it's a school fee. Maybe we go back to our different funders and see if they'll support this in some way. But I would urge us, as our member said, to be bold and courageous in this, because it is our children's mental health and well-being, and also our teachers, because to be that one policing it at every moment, that really erodes the relationship and the administrators. So it'd be great if we could be the leaders in this.
Yeah, I mean, I think the board is very energetic on that, exactly in the direction you're talking about. I think it's just a starting point, because, you know, we don't have any, we don't have very good options at the moment to start from. So, but definitely a starting point, not an end point, I would say, you know? So, so we're going to be voting on these on June 17th, then, yeah?
On the policy, we can do, we will do more work on the regs.
Okay.
Of course, there's a lot going on between now and the 17th of June.
You're so busy.
The, let me just then probe a bit. I don't know, Dave or Sylvia, if you have thoughts. What I've heard from Catherine and Alex, and Maureen, if you can hear us, is policy framework, yes. Now regs, and now I'm also hearing, okay, nice memo, Dr. McCurzy, where you're taking lean on the honor system, but go back to the drawing board, because we're not convinced. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I have my reservations about the honor system working, and maybe your review of the sealed pouch option, if it's a choice, you know, in there. If the choice is that you allow your child to bring the phone to school, then maybe there's a sign-off there, other ways to look at it, because I don't think, I don't think the honor system is going to work without strong oversight, and we don't want to put that on the teachers. So I do, I agree with what you said, Bill. I don't know if I'm chopping up, but I agree with the policy, and I would prefer to see a stronger implementation.
Maureen, if I may, what I heard there, very helpful, is yes on the policy, then concerned about the honor with the system. But with the pouches, we did weigh whether we would take the SEPTA, we didn't check this legally, whether we would put it on the supply list. So if I, we did or didn't?
No, we'd have to check.
Right, we'd have to check it. But if we went with the hunch that, and that's what I thought, I heard you say, Maureen, because this is what we've talked about amongst administrators, if the families decided, yes, Janie and Johnny come to school with their device, then yes, we are going to ourselves buy the yonder. And if you, of course, there's some checking on that mechanics. But is that what I was hearing, to think about potentially-
Correct.
... school supply required?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that, too. The only downside, the most immediate downside to that would be that if somebody was in a position to buy one, then their child could not bring the device to school. So that's something to navigate. But, I would say that when we spoke with Dan, Wagner had this phone control, I think, for two years already.
Yeah.
And he said, they use a pouching system, it's also fairly punitive for trying to get around it. He said that after two weeks of that, it was smooth sailing.
Yeah. And changed the culture.
And, right, we asked him that, and he was very adamant that it changed the culture.
Yeah, but that's 1,600 students, so.
Yeah.
And I did want to raise the one key piece of feedback that the department chairs wanted us to consider, because I'm not sure if that can be aired publicly between now and second reads. So, there is, I'm doing this from memory, I believe it's number five, that talks about field trips, the exceptions. And it says, outside of the instructional day, they were concerned that we perhaps, as a policy committee, just remove the, if it is legally allowable, which we would check, remove the part around the instructional day, just make field trip use allowable, given district employee permission. They were concerned about even a trip to, for example, Ellis Island, if a student needed to outreach, you know, if they gave the green light, if it was a district faculty member that gave approval for students to use it on a field trip. They wanted us to consider removing during the instructional day, just that clause, because they could come up with reasons why that might be very important for student safety, if it is legally allowable, based on the state guidance.
Well, we ourselves put this in.
Yeah.
So, and this has been reviewed by Suzanne Volpe. So, I think, this is where it's us. So I think, I'm not quite following what they want at.
They were just asking, remove the outside of the instructional day to allow for inside of the instructional day field trip use.
Which number was it?
I'm not, I'm not-
I think it was five.
No, seven.
Seven.
Number seven is on field trips that take place during hours outside of the instructional day-
That's it.
... and may extend overnight. So what were they asking?
So they were, remove outside of the instructional day, because there will be some exceptions where they felt like a field trip during the instructional day, the students might need it. So remove outside of the instructional day, but add the caveat with the permission of a district employee, for example.
Oh, I get it. So like, the teacher has to give permission that they can have field trips.
Exactly. Like, saying that, in this rare occasion, we want to make sure that students can use it. So, I think that's really an important consideration.
So, would the board agree, we could put a strike through that to not lose that? And then we can circle back between now and the 17th with the administrators. I mean, we-
Right.
We put that in, so if the, that's part of the consultation process. So, on the policy board, just so you're clear, it's a great example, this is just raised. In my notes, that are also in the, now in the public record, whilst policy, I was going to meet with the heads of each of the bargaining units. I think Melissa's just taking care of the department chairs, who were in a bargaining unit. But that'd be HTA, HA is all over this, because they're helping. And then the CSCA, and then I have a meeting with the PTSA/SEPTA leaders. That's just on the policy. And then I'll talk about the reg review. But I think I'd recommend, based on the department chairs, we make that change, and then can talk with, circle back with the administrators.
Were there any others from the department chairs or administrators that are there?
No, that was the key. And earlier in the policy, they were just questioning the extent to which it aligned to number two, which also references field trips. It's basically saying it's prohibited on field trips in number two. But the caveat in number seven to say, you know, if a district employee allows that and wants that, that's valid. I didn't see it as conflicting.
That's a good point.
I agree.
Thank you. All right, so then I'll be back down to the policy committee, and then we'll see the end on June 17th, voting. Do you have what you need for that?
Yeah, I just, we're going to, we may be going, yeah. So we'll get a legal review on the requirement around school supplies, and then think about, because we just can't go into our budget to cover this. So it is going to have to think that through.
Okay.
All right.
Moving on to-
Alex, just, if I can-
Of course.
... question, if someone would know how this would propose enforcement, so that we know if there's a fine, that could also be the guide, the guide for us, how they're going to enforce it.
I didn't, that broke up the other year.
It was a little garbled.
How the state will enforce it, will there be a fine?
Oh, if we didn't have a policy? Well, we only have to have a policy, right? So that's the state-
Which enforcement do you mean?
So, I guess, policy is the first, but if it's not implemented, or it doesn't have the intended effect, if there's a consequence, that would, I'd be curious to hear about that. Like, sometimes they impose fines, maybe have-
From what I know, Maureen, it's a good question. You are required to hear annually from the superintendent as to how it's going. I don't, there's nothing I've seen anywhere about a financial penalty for a district. If we were just not to do anything about this, we'd face some consequences. I'm not sure what those would be. But I don't, I don't, I know you're not going there. You're going more to, you know, I don't think there's going to be any outcome penalties, because how would you sort of measure that? I think it's more that we put it in, we have a policy that meets the required framework, that we're doing anything we cannot to have these devices present during the school days defined here, and that we're reporting annually on it. But that's a good question, I can keep my ears open. But I don't see financial penalties coming our way on this. I know, Maureen, if historically, you have a sense of-
No, the only thing that occasionally, this is for any policy, if you don't adhere to certain things, they could withhold aid. I mean, it doesn't, it's usually not for something of this, I mean, or in this realm. But, like, as an example, with the snow, well, snow days, they just take the money. But there are, that is the way the state, if you're out of compliance, they can hold funding. They do have the ability to do so, and I think that is how they, on things that you're required to have, if it were to become known that you were not implementing it, policy or otherwise, the state would likely come down. And that, I believe, is how they would say, you know, either first warn you a few times, and then possibly just even just withhold, you know, payments to you. Because that, around some other matters years ago, sometimes you would hear that, like, they won't, you know, pay you your payment of aid, or withhold it until you're in compliance. So I think that would probably be, but I think even beyond that, they would likely cite you right to up. I mean, the most extreme, they can take control of a, right? Like, I mean, in those, not over that. But I do, I do think, being that this was the governor's, was one of the items that actually was why the state budget took so long to finalize. I think it's extremely important to her, and I would imagine, more so than other kind of policies we're required to adopt, this one is going to be, I would imagine, audited, you know, like, we get audited, like, the internal auditors and all the rest. And those are areas, well, they'll come and see, is your, you know, is how you're implementing matching.
Yeah.
Would be my guess.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's tremendous energy in this district and board to get it done.
And in the state, it's such a big, you know?
Yeah. That's a good question, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the adoption of the 25-26 district-wide safety and emergency management plan. This is posted, the public version, and of course, we discussed it in executive session earlier this evening. Is there a motion, oh, this is new business, but we're adopting it, right? We're voting, right?
We're voting.
Is there a motion to adopt the 25-26 district-wide safety and emergency management plan?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to second public comment. We're going to gender review. This is going to be for the all-important date of 17th. We're going to have a retiree and tenure celebration, starting it off. Next steps, presentation. Do we, did we discuss the order of events we wanted for the retirees and the tenure? Were we doing something?
We did. We resolved it as, I think it's the order you see here.
Yeah.
And it's retirees first, then tenure.
Okay, perfect.
And it's, and we'll have a short reception, then go right into it at 5:30. We're, we do, I had to catch up with Melissa on whether you'll have the future steps report at that meeting, or as part of the July 8th, when you have your annual report. We do need to add, I mean, brief, we'll try to keep it brief, but there's, there need to be, there've been two, there's been the tri-state visit on diversity questions, and the cultural competence framework, and then we had an external audit through the state. So we should add that to the list here.
Through our internal auditing.
Thank you, yeah. So we should add an item here.
Oh, on the 17th, okay.
Yeah, we have to, and I think-
Get to adopt it.
Presenting both of those, and one's an adoption of that. So I think we should add an item here. I'm leaning towards, unless you disagree, pulling future steps into the July meeting-
Yeah, that seems like a good idea.
... because that's logical with the state of the-
And the vote, yeah. Seems like a lot.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
I know that I'm not going to be here for the July meeting, but I guess we can try to have-
Yeah, we'll have records.
Or records.
Yeah, we'll make sure you see it all.
Thank you, thank you.
So do you, Melissa, have that we just mentioned to add, and we'll take out?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Board of Education comments.
Don't forget to vote on June 17th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the Cochran Gym.
That's a good one.
Good point.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Still moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye, thank you. Is there a second? All in favor? Aye, thank you.